I will now call to order the February 17, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Shannon Bays, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Maticore, County Counsel. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader. She's on mute, but she said here.
Here.
Thank you. Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you very much. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We, good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting virtually, and I look forward to every return to in-person meetings next month. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign in up to testify. Registration for public comment is via Zoom and is available online. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your very polite comments. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First item today is a board discussion item, consideration of a board order to approve the petition as modified for the formation of the Hoodland Park District and refer the question to the May 2022 ballot. This is your, this is your final time, commissioners, to make a decision or not on this request. Jeff Muns is our Assistant County Counsel. He will give you a quick presentation and then have any questions, answer any questions, and then up to your discussion. Go ahead, please, Jeff.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioners and Chair Smith. This is the final step in the process that we started on January 6th, where we held a public hearing on this matter to consider the petition for the formation of the Hoodland Park District. Through that, we received a lot of input from the public. You have had a follow-up discussion two weeks ago, and then what we have before you today is an order to approve the formation of the Parks District as modified. And that modification, what we discussed last week, as well as in issues this week about withdrawing the roughly zip code area 97028, but the, the kind of little modification of that that's in the order before you today is that the area within Rhododendron, those residences or properties that use that zip code, 97028, would remain in the district. What we discussed last week was the property to the east of where Quanis Camp Road intersects with Highway 26, that those areas of Government Camp, Cascade Summit, and Wapenee should all be withdrawn from the proposed district. And so what would remain is the areas roughly from Sandy to Rhododendron. And that's attached to the staff report as an updated map. There's an updated legal description for those areas. And this district has largely been put together by using section numbers and portions of sections. So it's a pretty simple legal description, all reflected on the map. And so that order removes that 97028 area to the east where Quanis Camp Road intersects with Highway 26. And there's a ballot, this would be referred to the ballot for the question going to the voters to form the district, as well as election of the board members to serve, should the district be formed.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments now? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So I have to admit, I am map challenged. So if I study maps, I'm not going to. I have to really rely on advice here. So Jeffrey, you were part, I think the whole board was emailed by Regina about concerns that the maps that we approved the last time were not what she was wanting. And she sent an email. I know she had a conversation with you. Apparently, there's, they submitted other maps. Is this at all taken into consideration?
Yeah, you know, I think there was some, oh, sorry, interrupt. There was some misunderstanding about what they had submitted. I think they felt that they had, their map had included the area from Rhododendron all the way up to Government Camp, when, you know, the district, as it was proposed originally in the petition, there were some gaps. And so there was already a gap from this area where Quanis Camp Road intersects with Highway 26 up until you get into the Government Camp area. And so they believed that that whole area had been in their proposed district, and it was not in the map that was submitted. And so there was a little misunderstanding, but we had a good conversation and went through it through the sections and exchanged a lot of information. And so the map that's before you today is basically the map that they had originally submitted with those areas of Government Camp, Cascade Summit, and Wapenee are removed. And so we basically, where there was already a gap is where we ended the district for the purposes of this map. So it's consistent with what they sent us before, removing those three areas. So yes, we did have follow-up on that, and we're able to get, kind of get to the basis of what the misunderstanding was.
Okay, so then my question, the emails that are sent to me, I can't get this question answered. I don't, I don't know if what she was so upset about when we voted, if she is, if they are, the petitioners are no longer upset about that, and all their concerns are addressed in what we're voting on today.
Well, I can't really speak to all their concerns. I think that this question of, you know, was Rhododendron, is Rhododendron going to remain in the proposed district? And that's true, that it will continue to be in this proposed district that would go to the voters. And then when you go from where Quanis Camp Road leaves Highway 26 heading east, there really are, I don't see that there are any other properties in there where people are residing that would need to be brought in. They still have an annexation procedure that they could go through in the future if they identify additional properties that could be benefited by inclusion. So I think we addressed other concerns.
This clarification, my understanding was is they wanted the boundary that was the Rhododendron CPO. Is that included in what we're voting on today?
Correct.
Okay, so they don't, so their concerns were best. I wish they were here so I could ask the question. I mean, I'm trying to dissect the emails, and I don't know.
Yeah, and there's been a number of other emails kind of on that topic. It looks like we have, I think there's some, you know, there's a lot of information. Well, there's been a few emails that come in late that unfortunately weren't submitted during the time of the public hearing. And that's part of the processes, that your decision has to be based upon information received in the public hearing. And, you know, your determination, the order, is that the areas in the now proposed modified boundary would be benefited by inclusion in the Hoodland Parks District, and those areas removed would not be benefited. And that's the finding that's in the draft order. And that would be based upon the evidence, information submitted during the public hearing.
Well, I need a point of clarification on that, Jeffrey Muns. I allowed testimony for weeks after our last public hearing. And I think this board was very generous on allowing all that testimony to come in. What has come in this week, and I saw those two, Commissioner Fisher, really cannot be considered. And I can't remember what the cutoff date was on that. Maybe the attorneys can do that.
I can, you went until, so the last date of the public hearing was January 20th, and you extended it for an additional week after that time, which, during which is when a lot of these emails were exchanged.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeffrey. Mr. Savas, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just want to just recognize that I think we made a number of the combinations that, that address the concerns that we've expressed and, Commissioner Fisher, that you pointed out. I did see some late emails, and I got a sense that we're not going to get this perfect, but there's opportunity in the future, should this pass and the district be formed, to make those modifications in the future. So there is a process to correct it, so it's not as though this is the end of the, the last opportunity. It's just the beginning.
I would agree, and let's get this sent out to the votes so they can get their process moving forward and, and get some experience under their feet, and then they can make decisions later on what they want to do. Commissioner Schrader? You're on mute, Commissioner Schrader.
To add to what Commissioner Savas said, I think that there's an opportunity later in the time for them to do a modification if necessary. And I agree with you, Chair, that we need to move ahead with this so they can get in on the ballot as soon as possible.
Yes. Commissioner Scholl, comment.
The people of the Hoodland Park Committee have done their due diligence in accordance with Oregon regulatory statute, and I concur that this should go forward today.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from staff or commissioners at this time? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of Board Order 2022-06 to approve the petition as modified for the formation of the Hoodland Park District and refer the question to the May 2022 ballot.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl has made the motion to approve the Hoodland Park District to the ballot, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. I will reiterate at this time, the board order will state it'd be a five-member Parks Board membership, directory, commission, whatever you want to call it, and 67 cents, and the boundary lines. Is that correct, counsel?
That's correct. That's what's contained in the order.
Okay, I just want to reiterate that. Okay. Any other discussion? I just want to have a point of clarification on that. Okay, Shannon, please call the poll.
Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Savas.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
No. Motion passes four one. Thank you very much. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is a public hearing. This public hearing, one public hearing today, approval of a board order accepting a request to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Sandy for a portion of Southeast Crescent Road, County Road Number 1698, DTD Number P4070, to the city of Sandy. This is a public hearing. The person in my script is not here, so I assume it's Michael Bays, Shannon, who is speaking to this. So bring in Michael Bays from Transportation and Development. All right. Mike, you are presenting on this, correct?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Mike Bays from Transportation and Development. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Michael Bays. I represent the county's Department of Transportation and Development. Today, we have before you a request to approve a board order for the transfers of jurisdiction of Crescent Road from Clackamas County to the city of Sandy. This request has been discussed by the staff of both jurisdictions. Clackamas County and the city of Sandy have agreed to the transfer of Crescent Road to the city with the intent of streamlining roadway improvements, eliminating confusion to the public, and to improve efficiencies in maintenance and public service. Crescent Road is entirely located within the city set, sit, excuse me, city of Sandy limits. Crescent was also recently paved by a private development, so there are no additional payments associated with this transfer. The person, excuse me, the portion of Crescent Road to be transferred is approximately 330 feet long. It contains approximately 13,450 square feet of roadway. A notice for today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Sandy Post newspaper. This request is consistent with the county's practice and policy of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide the necessary government services at the least cost to our citizens. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Do we have any questions for the presenter from Commissioners on this topic? I will now open a public hearing. Shannon, do we have anybody wishing to testify on this road transfer?
I have no one registered to speak on this road transfer, but if anyone was not able to register and would like to speak on this matter now, please raise your hand. Oh, sorry, I just realized I hadn't turned on that function. Please raise your hand at this time. You can hit star six to do so.
We'll just wait a few seconds to see if anybody wants to talk about it.
There are no hands raised, Chair.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of Board Order 2022-11 accepting a request to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Sandy of a portion of Southeast Crescent Road.
Second.
Commissioner Savas, excuse me, Commissioner Scholl has moved for the transfer of Crescent Road from Clackamas County to the city of Sandy. Commissioner Savas has seconded that motion. Is there any further board discussion on this item? Seeing none, Shannon, can you call the poll, please?
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Scholl.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Consent agenda. Gary, what's up?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Can you see that?
Yes.
Wonderful. Help Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with the state of Oregon acting through its Oregon Department of Administrative Services to purchase and outfit a van to provide COVID-19 vaccinations in the county through home visits and assist with the HIV/STI prevention work. Contract not to exceed $100,000. Funding is provided by the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a revenue professional services agreement with Trillium Community Health Plan, Inc., for the point-of-care provider services. There is no maximum value. This is a fee-for-service agreement. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Three to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University for the Oregon Care Continuum Program. Contract maximum value is $324,141, funded with grant funds from OHSU. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Zero Three to a subrecipient agreement with Cascadia Behavioral Healthcare, Inc., for assertive community treatment program. Amendment adds $14,868.78 to the agreement, increasing the maximum grant value to $133,819.2, funding through state of Oregon Community Mental Health Plan funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the Get Trained to Help Regional Collaborative Agreement. Value is $10,000, funded, provided by Health Share of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval of grant agreement Number M21-UP410201 with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, acting by and through its Health Housing and Human Services Department for access to $182,475, 5% of the total 2021 Home American Rescue Plan grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of change order Number Seven between Clackamas County and Anchrom Moysen Associated Architect, Inc., for the Sandy Health Clinic Project. This change order adds $65,600 to the contract for design services for the medical and dental spaces. The new contract total is $380,385.64, funded through health centers fund balance. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number One to a personal services agreement with Project Access Now for referral partnership services for Clackamas Health Centers Division. This amendment adds $2,667 for, dollars for a new contract not to exceed value of $10,667. Funding is through fee-for-service revenue. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Two to a federal subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for Emergency Shelter Services. This amendment adds $25,535.50 for a new contract total value of $108,362.50, funded through the Federal Department of Homeland Security Emergency Food and Shelter Program Phase 38. No county general funds are involved. Finance. Approval of Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Charbonneau Boat House with Charbonneau Country Club lease agreement. The value of this five-year, six-month lease is $17,905.21, funded through budgeted county general funds. Transportation and Development. Approval to apply for a regional flexible funds allocation grant for the I-205 Multi-Use Path Gap Refinement Plan. Application is requesting $935,884 in grant funds. Matching funds of $96,115.29 will be provided from county road funds, road use funds, pardon me. Total project cost is $1,031,999.29. No county general funds are involved. County Counsel. Approval of a settlement agreement and execution of quitclaim deed in the lawsuit Jerry A. Wrench, trustee at all v. Clackamas County at all. No funds are being paid in the settlement. Adoption of previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment zone change and partition application. That is the end of my list, Chair.
You're on mute, Chair Smith.
You know, we all do that. Thank you very much, Shannon, for that reading. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off the consent agenda today? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for passage.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of consent agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please call the poll.
Mr. Savas.
Aye.
Mr. Scholl.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next is public communication, Chair Smith.
Thank you very much. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon by statutes and county code. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. And Shannon, can you please moderate this portion and call on people as their time allows, and each person will have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I have a list of registered participants. If anyone is on Zoom but, but did not have a chance to register ahead of time and would like to testify, please select the raise hand feature. I will call on the registered participants first and then raised hands in the order they were received. First up is Chris Waller. Chris, please state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. I would like to formally object to the action taken by Chair Tudie Smith to silence me during my speech last week. I believe that her actions violate the spirit of the Oregon Constitution and present a legal risk to the counties, I will explain. Chair Smith has silenced at least three different speakers on at least six occasions in the past year. Strikingly, every one of these incidents has involved a speaker whose views were opposed to Chair Smith or who criticized Chair Smith's behavior. On no occasion has she cut off the microphone of someone espousing a conservative, right-wing, or Republican viewpoint, no matter the content of their speech. Here are three examples. At the June 3rd business meeting, Chair Smith, after audibly sighing when she heard my name announced as the next speaker, abruptly cut me off in the middle of my public comment, stating that my commentary was really not county business. I was discussing the harm of Commissioner Scholl's equation of vaccine passports and Jim Crow laws. On at least two occasions, Chair Smith has interrupted the speech of retired nurse Christine Kennedy, on one occasion when Ms. Kennedy was simply asking Chair Smith to pay attention to what she was saying. Speaker Connie Lee was cut off while discussing social justice issues in the county. I have brought to your attention before how this behavior directly contradicts the advice of the League of Oregon Cities, which has produced several publications dealing with public commentary that are applicable on the county level. In general, while public entities in Oregon may establish restrictions on the time, place, and manner of public testimony, all of these restrictions must be viewpoint-neutral, and care must be taken to protect the freedom of speech under the First Amendment and Article One, Section Eight of the Oregon Constitution. This document also notes that case law such as Norris versus City of Santa Cruz clearly supports that if public speech is not preventing the governing body from completing its work, it must be allowed to continue. The League also states, although the Oregon courts have not decided a case involving free speech in public meetings, they have made clear that any content-based restriction is unconstitutional under the Oregon Constitution. Consequently, where the law allows the public to speak, the council must take extreme caution to not take action that limits what that person is allowed to say. Chair Smith is setting herself up to be that test case involving free speech and public meetings in Oregon, and it is unlikely that she will prevail. I have been in contact with a lawyer and ACLU about this matter. I hope that Chair Smith will be advised that all of us who attempt to peacefully present our viewpoints to the county must be allowed to do so without interruption. Thank you.
Right. Next up is Christine Kennedy. Christine? Please unmute yourself. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
This is Christine Kennedy. I'm a resident of Clackamas County. I've lived here for seven years. So Chair Smith and Commissioners, thank you for the time this morning to be able to share some views. And I'm a retired healthcare professional, retired nurse, so I'm watching all the issues around COVID very carefully. I have a two-year-old grandson who cannot be vaccinated. I have an eight and a six-year-old grandchildren who are at Palanin Elementary School, and they are vaccinated. And I'm very interested in the report that, that comes out every week, so I was able to find it this morning. And the positivity for Clackamas County is still at 12.7%. Everything that we're hearing about this pandemic with COVID-19, with SARS-CoV-2 virus, is local. We need to be paying attention to what's happening locally. Local, 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 local. And, you know, we can be, we can look at a state average. We can look at a county average, and that's what I would like to just address today. So we're at 12.7% positivity still in Clackamas County. Even though we know that a lot of people are probably not testing, the 12.7% positivity is still a significant criteria or case to look at. We are now below the positivity rate, which, the week of 12, 26, 21, but we're still well above the rate even before the Omicron wave hit us. So we started from a high baseline when the Omicron hit. I do want to extend my sincere condolences to the additional 16 family units that lost. We had 16 additional deaths in Clackamas County in the last week from COVID. If we had 16 deaths from anything else, we'd be talking about it, but we're not talking about COVID. We know the indoor, the indoor mask mandate is going to be lifted on the 31st of March. For many of us, that's a concern, because now we have a pandemic of misinformation and anxiety. So half the people are happy about it, half the people aren't. But we know what we need to do. So I really encourage Clackamas County, support public health, fund a debrief. We need to know what works and what doesn't. Thank you.
Chair, that is the end of my list.
Thank you very much, Shannon, for that. Gary, you're up.
Well, thank you, Chair Smith and Commissioners. This is County Administrator Update. I always like to share good news of things that our county employees and our programs and services are doing for the public. Today, Clackamas Water Environment Services, or Wes, is marking its 10th year of providing River Health stewardship program grants to community groups seeking to help improve watershed health within the Wes service area. Grants of up to $30,000 may be awarded to groups, 30,000 each, up to groups. Last year, the program granted slightly more than $280,000 worth of grants to 12 organizations for protection of local watersheds. In addition to improving environmental health and water quality, the program provides opportunities for his- for historically hard-to-reach communities to benefit from watershed health education and partnership opportunities. If you or someone you know would like to apply for these grants, please go to the county website, clackamas.us/wes. Next, Commissioners, a few weeks ago, I shared with you that the Oregon Department of Transportation and Clackamas County worked together to install protected left turns at Foster Road on Highway 212 in Damascus. A member of the public was very grateful and wrote to us, Larry and Linda from Damascus wrote to our staff, "A big thank you to those who made turn lights at the intersection of Highway 212 and Foster Road happen." Finally, those of us who are trying to turn left onto Highway 212 from Foster Road have a chance to actually make that turn without having to wait through two, three, or four traffic lights. Things are moving much more smoothly through that intersection, and we appreciate the county. So thank you for that note. Thank you to our staff in transportation and development, and Mike Besner and Joe Merrick in particular for them and their teams working with ODOT to make that happen. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Great news, Gary. Yes, that intersection is a bugger, and I have not driven out there yet, but I'm sure it will be running much smoothly. Now, time for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Fisher, you're up first.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Nice to see everyone today. Commissioner Schrader and I were back at the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference from Friday evening through... What time did I get in last night? A little after 11:00 p.m. Don't know why I'm not exhausted. I honestly should be totally asleep right now, but I am really inspired by what happened back at the conference. On the last day after we made our Hill visits, we did a sort of debrief with the Commissioners who were there, and we asked, "Well, what was your biggest takeaway? What was your highlight of the conference?" And it was almost unanimous. Being in person and being able to connect, share stories, talk about what's working in our counties, what's challenging in our counties, was what was ever so valuable. Universally, we do not take our human interaction as community leaders for granted anymore. It is essential to good work. We didn't know when we signed up for this conference that President Biden was going to make an actual appearance at the conference and talk to us for quite some time, but he did, and that was just awesome. Really, when our national leaders talk to local elected leaders, there is so much commonality you just can't disagree with what's said. I felt the same way when President Trump addressed the National Association of Counties. Gosh, Martha, when was that now? Because we had COVID time. Was that, it wasn't three years ago, was it? Was it two years ago, right before the shutdown? Yeah. Okay. So some of the issues that were highlighted that I tapped into through my work with the committee's substance use disorder, very big issue. Heard some great presentations from our national leaders on this topic. Very much a crisis. People are dying at an alarming rate every day. It's not getting the public attention that, say, COVID is getting at all, but yet it is a serious crisis. And one of the quotes that really just blew me away, and I wish I would have written it down exactly, but in 1913, the Cancer Society talked about the stigma of cancer and how people don't get treatment, how they're just sentenced to die, or they don't even know they have cancer. It was something they didn't talk about. And now, in our country, through this time of over 100 years, we have many people in recovery for cancer, and it's not stigmatized as it once was. So it's just sort of the vision of substance use disorder is an illness, it is a medical disease that we will evolve and look to really cure through time, and a lot of focus there. It's a big challenge, especially as we are looking to recover from this pandemic. Mental health was integrated throughout conversations. It was integrated through the Rural Action Caucus and the struggle that farmers and our agricultural communities are having with maintaining mental health and increased suicide rates in those communities. Really concerned about mental health. A new concept which, very inspiring, called second responders. I didn't know about second responders, but second responders are how do we utilize a workforce that has incredible communication skills, incredible problem-solving skills to help when communities are in distress? Well, it's the arts community, it's the poets, it's the writers, it's the actors, it's the musicians, it's the dancers. It's how do we garner all of that creativity and move it forward? There's a whole initiative going on, and we got to learn about that at NACO. Another area that I was, and Chair Smith, I know you're going to be really interested in this, the concept of social emotional learning. How do we make sure that our children, all of our children, not just the children that have a diagnosis of, say, anxiety or depression or a mental health challenge, but all of our children have social emotional curriculum tied into their learning so that we are developing children that have the tools necessary to navigate in this complex world in a healthy and social, and with their families and with their parents? It's a whole initiative that is really taking off. Senator Wyden's staff is working on that particularly and really interested in what we shared when we debriefed Senator Wyden on what was happening locally and nationally, areas of interest. So I can go on and on, but as you can see, I'm pretty fired up. This was great. I really want to encourage, and Commissioner Savas, people asked about you. They're like, "Where's Commissioner Savas? We know Commissioner Savas." I don't know, I heard that. Martha, I don't know about you, but I heard that like three or four times, people asking for you for all that you've contributed on transportation. And I said, "He is well and holding down the fort in Clackamas County." So that's what I have to share for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Shaw, you're next.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County, and thank you to the callers for taking time to participate in our meeting today. On the Hoodland Park District, the Hoodland Park Committee, in accordance with Oregon regulatory statutes, has complied with the requirements and procedures to bring the Park District idea to the voters in May, and now the people will decide. And I appreciate the hard work and the civic conviction of the members of the committee. On the Clackamas County Coordinated Committee Metro Subcommittee meeting yesterday, the representatives from the Department of Land Conservation and Development from Salem spoke on the climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking process. How will those rules be developed? How will they be implemented? How will they affect you and your business? What will the cost be? How will these goals affect commerce in the region? On 31 March and 1 April, the Department of Land Conservation and Development will host their first public hearing on this climate subject. See their website on oregon.gov, read up on their ideas, see how they affect you and your job and your business, and make your opinion heard. On tolling, ODOT continues to march towards implementation on all lanes of I-205, and we've been asking questions for over a year now from our cities and the county, and we're still waiting for answers. And I have not spoken to anyone in the county who's pro-tolling. Please see the Oregon website on oregon.gov. There you will find the information that's available, along with many questions. What is the cost? Why does ODOT plan on tolling all lanes? How long will tolling be implemented? These things you need to know about, and you need to make your opinion heard. On masks mandates and vaccinations, like we just heard, we still have a relatively high infection rate of Omicron in the county, but COVID is waning. And let's all make a resolution to get healthy, to stay healthy, and make the rest of 2022 a success for our families, our businesses, and our society. And I look forward in the near future to seeing you back here in person for our business meetings. Contact me at mshaw at clackamas.us, and let me know what your issues are and what's on your mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Well, thank you all. I was on a family trip last week and got to see my siblings all together at the same place for the first time in 21 years. So that was huge, plus all my other family, extended family for my niece's wedding. So it was very, very enjoyable. I'll say that. As it relates to some of the things where he had been talking about here today, I would say I had the opportunity to be in Dallas-Fort Worth, in Austin, Texas, and in Houston, and saw transportation issues, talked to people I know there, and talked also about homeless issues. And I have family that live on the East Coast, Tennessee, Florida, Washington, D.C., Texas, California, and so on. So we had a pretty good conversation about that, and hands down, I think Portland appears, per capita, appears to have the highest population of homeless people than any other area or state or metro region that I'm aware of. And I think that was a conversation we had. I have family that also work for government in a number of areas, including counties. So with that said, we have to look, I think, at our land use policies and why housing is so unaffordable in this area, and how much that contributes to the homeless population as well as transportation issues. Very fascinated to see the different transportation approaches in different areas. Dallas-Fort Worth has tolling. People embrace it because they have a choice. There's a choice between driving on toll lanes, there's a choice driving on free lanes, and if we're all worried about diversion, let me tell you, I think it's going to be, if this area is toll, we're going to see worse diversion than ever before. For example, there isn't, the apps down there, like on your phone, if you want to get to point A to point B, you can actually select toll roads or no toll roads. Okay? So people can select, "I want to pay no tolls," and they will be diverted to roads, whether they're backroads or whether they're neighborhoods or wherever, and you will go in places that you probably really, it's interstate traffic. Here we are, moving from one part of the state to another part of the state and being diverted off the main system because of a selection of no tolls. So I experimented quite a bit when I was there, and I will just say that we have our concerns about, at least this portion of I-205 in Clackamas County. I think those are resonating in a tremendous way. Yesterday morning, I was pleased and honored to be a spokesperson or a panelist, if you will, for the Chambers of Commerce in the region on tolling. A great discussion. I presented the board's position. I presented and spoke a lot about the 2018 letter the board wrote to them. Everything that is in that letter of 2018 is relevant today. Our issues and our concerns are 100% relevant today. And I just find it's, it just struck me yesterday morning that after four years since writing that letter, a lot of those concerns are not even being addressed today. And I think that's why, I believe, a number of people are pretty concerned that ODOT needs to be more open and transparent and collaborative. And we are asking for that currently with your approval, my board's approval, my colleagues to take that approach with ODOT and try to work cooperatively and collaboratively, and our staff are doing a lot of hard work that way, too. So hats off the staff. They've been very helpful in every which way, perhaps every forum. You know, everyone's working together really well. I don't know where we're going to land on tolling. At the Chambers of Commerce event yesterday morning, I was, the other spokesperson or spokesperson panelist was Senator Kenner, and Senator Kenner talked about the politics and his ballot, not a ballot initiative, but his joint resolution to have a hearing on a tolling measure, to be able to have a vote on tolling. I guess he's not going to have that hearing. I guess the hearing was called off by the chair, and some discussion was about the ballot initiative, I guess it's IP41 if I remember correctly. So a little bit of discussion there. We had some great Q and A, and this morning at J-PAC, we had even greater discussion. And I noticed this morning, probably the highest attendance ever in the audience of J-PAC. Normally, 40 people. Sometimes when there's a hot issue, maybe it's 65 to 75 people. We were at 99 people this morning in the audience, so that's significant. All eyes are on this. I will say that we had probably one of the best meetings at J-PAC ever, and there's just a lot of collaboration on making sure that we, whatever we do, we do it right. But I want to go back to one simple word that struck me on my trip traveling through these areas, is that people had a choice. And I think here, people should also have a choice of how they move and how they decide to go from point A to point B. And in Clackamas County, especially along this corridor, we only have one choice, and that is to drive a car. And if they toll the road, we will not have a choice on whether or not we want to drive on a toll road or not, other than to divert around this area and through neighborhoods. And that is, that's just not acceptable. It's not safe. So I will conclude my comments there. And, oh, by the way, I do want to get back to NACO, and hopefully I can make the summer trip to NACO for the summer event. Where's it going to be held at?
Colorado.
Colorado, awesome. So hopefully I can make that one. Thank you.
Almost in the same time zone. That's encouraging. Thank you, Commissioner Savas, for your report. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you, Chair Smith and colleagues. As Commissioner Fisher said, we both attended the National Association of Counties, which was packed full of information, and I have a whole suitcase full of articles that I always bring home with me that I will distribute around the office. I had the privilege this time of chairing the Community Economic Development and Workforce Committee, and that was kind of an honor. Our chair could not make it this time, so I was chosen as the next best alternative to do it. And we had a, I think, an extremely impressive lineup for folks to talk to. But first, I'm going to thank our Legislative Director, who helps out, Michael Matthews, and then the Associate Legislative Director, Sarah Giamont, and these are the folks that staff our committee, help us get the speakers, and help to run the committee really well. So let me go through some of the speakers. We had Assistant Secretary Castillo, who took the time out of her schedule to update the committee on the great work that the Economic Development Administration has been doing. To that end, with the prospects of an EDA reauthorization being introduced in the House, becoming increasingly more likely, NACO and our membership basically voted to support those reauthorization efforts. She gave a wonderful speech. Next, we had Acting Assistant Secretary Angela Hanks. She was the, or is the Acting Assistant Secretary for Employment and Training Administration at the U.S. Department of Labor. She graciously agreed to provide an overview of the Biden Administration's recent workforce development and John training activities, as well as the department's newly announced Good Job Initiative. And we are looking at that very closely with our Workforce Board, and are going to be tracking what that could mean for us in terms of resources and how we move people back into employment. Let's see who else came. Oh, we had White House Senior Advisor Luke McGowan, and he is a senior advisor from the White House's Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. And his role, he is tasked with leading the stimulus and economic recovery efforts with state and local governments, which includes the implementation of the CARES Act, the American Rescue Plan, and identifying new infrastructure projects, and also to ensure that the economic recovery and also to ensure that the economic recovery supports climate resilience and racial justice. And finally, let's see, we had Scott Estrada from the House Education and Labor Committee. And he joined us to speak about the creation and development of workforce policy decisions and legislation initiatives for the House Education and Labor Committee. And he serves as Chairman Bobby Scott's advisor on workforce development issues. So we had some really significant speakers. We also had Treasury Chief Recovery Officer Jacob Liebenloft, and that was an informational session because he really talked about how at least 50% of residents who have rent have spent more than half their household income on housing, and also how housing affordability affects counties of all sizes in every region of the United States. And he tried to help us better understand what federal programs and resources were out there and how more effectively we can devise a housing strategy to solve our unique problems at home. So that was kind of my plan. I also had an opportunity to go to the Large Urban County Caucus. I believe that Commissioner Fisher was there as well. And I wanted to mention that childcare, both as a social issue and as an economic development issue, not only came up in the Community Economic Development and Workforce Commission, it also came up in the Large Urban Action, excuse me, Action Caucus. So that's just a little bit of what I ended up doing. I have lists of note, lots of articles, but I will defer to bringing them back to you personally so I can talk about it during later meetings. But it was a fantastic conference. I had the opportunity to interact with colleagues from all over the United States, from transportation to workforce, to you name it, economic development, housing policy. And I think really going to the conference, if all of us at one time or another can really attend these meetings, it gives us a whole new perspective of what we could be doing. And it also gives us the help we need and the, you know, energy we need to know that there are other people, other countries across the great, our great country that are facing similar problems and are doing a really good job. So that's my report for now, and there will be more to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. I look forward to the reports from both you, from you and Commissioner Fisher. And I would like, you know, more detail. The nice thing about NACO is that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. They pretty much have been a forest, right? So if you could bring back ideas that we haven't heard of, something you're passionate about, maybe just, you know, take, take the time in our sessions next week to talk about one thing, and then next week, come back about another thing that's fresh in your mind, so we can get some good detail on that. I really would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Last night, as the chair, I attended the Clackamas County Fair Board Monthly Meeting. Gary Linton is the chair. And I have to say, the Fair Board is functioning quite well and doing very good work. They have not had an executive director for a couple of months, and I think they made a decision last night, excuse me, on that. What they also informed me is, you remember the Oregon Legislature in the last regular session, set aside $10 million for fair capital projects? The Oregon Fairs Association has decided that $10 million should be split equally among all the counties. So that's about $250,000 each per county. And they seem to be fine with that, because all fairs have a need for capital construction, let's face it. They are currently having weekly Zoom meetings on the construction of the livestock barn with our facilities folks. Clackamas County is providing project management on the construction of the fair barn. And right now, they are getting engineering reports, architectural reports, working with the City of, City of Camby on the zoning, any willing repairs that need to be done. The lead on that is Dan Sandberg. So if any commissioners have any questions on any of the fair ongoings, you can either ask me, or I would reach out to Steve at Facilities Maintenance, because we have decided that we just need one point of contact. Their fair board has agreed just to go through Dan Sandberg. If they have questions, instead of all the fire board members reaching out to county employees, I was on an email chain this week, and I had no idea what was going on. And so likewise, if we need to know something, reach out to me or go through Steve at Facilities, and he can give you an update on that. But it is proceeding. And I have to say, that meeting just ran very professionally, was very well done. They got a lot of work done, and I was very, very pleased to be in attendance. After this meeting, I will be attending virtually, giving testimony to the OTC, the Oregon Transportation Commission, to reiterate once again Clackamas County values regarding tolling and all of the issues that Commissioner Savas has brought up in my short two-minute opportunity to do so. And I'm very happy to do so and continue to remind them. Like Commissioner Savas, in the last year, I've traveled to Texas, Florida, and Southern California, where tolls are a choice. And somehow, they have enough money to continue to build their roads. In fact, I think they collect more money than they have the physical opportunity to build them. And so I think that is something that needs to be considered. They cannot disproportionately toll I-205 before they toll I-5 freeway. That is not going to work for us. Later this afternoon, Commissioners, as you know, we have our very first Emergency Preparedness Council meeting. We, we have approved and made selections of the fifteen member council plus five ex-officials, which the people who have applied and have been appointed are some of the top people in their fields of expertise. And I so look forward to that. I look forward to each commissioner getting a contribution in the area that you want to contribute to. The council will decide on what those five areas are, and then we will proceed on that. A lot of good stuff going on, Commissioners. You all are very vital to the importance of Clackamas County. I want to thank you for your participation today. And without seeing any further business before this commission, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.